Good evening and welcome to the Lake Havasu City Council. I will now call to order the council meeting on Tuesday, September 24th, 2024 at 5:30 PM. We'll have an invocation from Pastor David Jackson from Hilltop Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Haven Center.
Let's have a word of prayer. Gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you that we can freely assemble here and we can seek to unify the city and make decisions for the best of our community, Lord. We pray that you bless our council members, bless their family lives. Pray, Lord, that we be with the audience and that we're respectful and we treat each other with respect and come about with the best solution. And may you be glorified in all, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome, Haven Center. If you'd like to share a little bit about your organization.
Yes, I'm Danielle Arons. I'm president of the Board of Haven. Thank you. Yes, right?
Speak up.
Haven Center is a nonprofit family advocacy center, fully accredited with the National Children's Alliance. Full accreditation is the highest level of membership and denotes excellence in service provision to cases involving child abuse. Haven has been providing services to the community since 2001, and the staff is available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to provide on-scene crisis responses to crimes such as child abuse, domestic violence, sexual abuse, and other person crimes. Haven has partnerships with the local law enforcement agencies and the court systems with the goal of providing victims and their families with comprehensive services while holding offenders accountable. In addition to crisis services, Haven also oversees the Mojave County Child Abuse Prevention Council, which provides community outreach and education, including mandated reporter trainings. Haven facilitates the Food for Kids program, which provides food for homeless and at-risk children on the weekends. October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and we ask that the community join us on Friday, October 11th, at 5:30 PM for our annual Save a Life Domestic Violence Awareness Walk at Rotary Park. Anyone interested in participating can visit our website or the registration link or contact the center. We walk to raise awareness about intimate partner violence, honor victims, support survivors, and provide resources to our community, and we appreciate the city's support throughout the years. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for being here, and thank you for the important work that you do in our community. We appreciate the partnership. Item four on our agenda is the roll call. Ms. Williams, if you please call the roll.
Councilmembers Nancy Campbell, here. Michelle Lynn, here. Jenny Koch, here. Jim Dolan, here.
He present.
David Lane, here. Vice Mayor Cameron Moses, present. Mayor Kalshihi, here. Thank you.
Thank you. Item five is our consent agenda. Would any of the council members like to remove any of the items for separate discussion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Koch?
Motion?
Please.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Koch, a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item six is correspondence, communications, petitions, announcements, and the city manager report. Item 6.1 is the investment report as of June 30th, 2024. Ms. Olson included this in our packet for our review. If you have any questions or if the citizens would like to see it, please join, please go to our website at lhcaz.gov, and you'll be able to see the investment report. Item 6.2 is to announce the vacancies on our Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, there are several vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Board of Adjustment, one regular member, one alternate member, and the Planning and Zoning Commission, one regular member. Anyone interested can pick up a packet at City Hall, and they are also available on the city's website at lhcaz.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Point, interest report. Good evening, Mr. Knutson.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Much to share this evening, including thinking back just a couple of days, a couple of weeks ago, when on Wednesday, September 11th, we came together as a community to honor the heroes of 9/11 and remember the nearly 3,000 lives lost at the World Trade Center, the Pentagon, and aboard Flight 53 on that tragic day in 2001. The 9/11 Committee organized a touching ceremony with meaningful speeches from Mayor Kalshihi and Judge Mitchell Colali, reminding us of the importance of remembering the courage and sacrifices that were shown that day. Thank you to all who helped with the ceremony together and made this event possible. On Saturday, September 14th, in recognition of National Suicide Prevention Month, Councilmember Jenny Koch presented the proclamation on behalf of Mayor Shih during the You Matter Walk. The Havasu Suicide Awareness Prevention Walk raises awareness about suicide and promotes prevention by training individuals on how to engage with those who are suicidal and direct them to community resources that they need. And on Tuesday, September 17th, Vice Mayor Cameron Moses and Councilmembers Nancy Campbell and David Lane attended the Daughters of the American Revolution Constitution Celebration and Bell Ring Ceremony. The Arizona Society for Daughters of American Revolution, the Daughters of the American Revolution, I apologize, was formed in 1908 and has 43 chapters with over 3,000 members. The Havasu Chapter, founded in 1979, includes 62 members and supports projects like scholarships, book donations, veteran assistance, and recognizing outstanding citizens in our community. For more information, please contact Millie Morris, and she can be reached at 951-741-8971 or visit their website at havasu.Arizona.D A R dot O R G. Just last Saturday, on September 21st, on behalf of Mayor Shih, Vice Mayor Cameron Moses presented a proclamation to honor Breast Cancer Awareness Month and was joined by Councilmember Jenny Koch and Community Engagement Officer Jerry Bracamonte. It was the "The Sea of Pink Under the Leonard Bridge" was the theme and supported the Cancer Care Resources inaugural Breast Cancer Awareness Walk. Also last Saturday, Vice Mayor Cameron Moses and Councilmember David Lane kicked off the opening day festivities at Cypress Park to welcome the 2024 Havasu Lions FC Soccer Session. On behalf of the Mayor's Office, Vice Mayor Cameron Moses and Councilmember David Lane presented a proclamation to the Havasu Lions FC in honor of the first annual opening day ceremony, with a commitment of serving 1,200 youth. That's 1,200 kids in Lake Havasu City are part of the soccer league. They are now ready to start the season. Lake Havasu City Arizona Elks Lodge 2399 hosted their annual Law and Order Nights, recognized and show appreciation for our local law enforcement and emergency rescue personnel. Jill Eckleberger received a special award from the Elks Lodge and Congressman Gosar in honor of her retirement, as she is the longest tenured employee in the history of our police department. She was honored at the ceremony by Captain Williams and retired Chief Dan Doyle was there. Captain Williams, Officer Donahue, and Officer Carroll accepted a $500 donation on behalf of Lake Havasu City Cadet Program. There was another 500 donation to the Community Emergency Response Team, and accepting this donation was Bob McMillan and our Fire Chief Pete Palafas. Chief Palafas also accepted the Outstanding Leadership Award on behalf of Fire Marshal Alder, who could not be there. The Enrique Camanera Award was presented to a detective who cannot be pictured here because he's one that's responsible for catching the bad guys in town, and he was recognized for his work in combating narcotics in Lake Havasu City. This award is named in honor of DEA Special Agent Camanera, who was tragically slain by the cartel in Mexico. And we are seeing many, many improvements in our park areas in the last couple of weeks. First of which, you'll see on the top left there is our installation of one of our new drinking fountains that was installed at Lennon Bridge Beach. We will also be installing new replacement drinking fountains in various locations throughout London Bridge, London Bridge Beach, and in Rotary Park. Our talented staff has built and installed a new section of handrail at Site Six, all completed in-house. Their hard work and craftsmanship continue to enhance our facilities and ensure safety for our community. The washout at Walgreen Slope has been successfully repaired. The project required a permit from ADOT to close the adjacent lane for access and remove the overburden. Our dedicated park staff worked diligently from 8:00 PM to 1:00 in the morning to complete the project, removing 20 tons of dirt and sand, and then regraded and compacted the area, applying 20 tons of two-to-four inch decorative red rock to finish the job. And the new playground equipment at Jack Hardy Park is progressing. There's still some items to complete, including new fencing, painting the perimeter wall, and landscaping details, but it already looks amazing. And a reminder that Lake Havasu City residents and those interested that the Lake Havasu City Fire Department is hosting an open house recruitment event on October 2nd from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the training facility on Kaowa Boulevard. This is a great opportunity for anyone interested in a career in firefighting to learn more about the job, meet current firefighters, and get an overview of the recruitment process for Lake Havasu City. Staff will be there to answer questions about qualifications, the application process, and what it takes to join the team. If you're interested in more details about the event, please visit our website at lhcaz.gov/fire-department. And lastly, the video was shared on social media, but we still have another week or so until we close out any comments or ideas for the naming of the Square Park, Vent Space, Community Gathering Location, or what we want to do in downtown Lake Havasu City on McCullough and Querion.
Standing on the corner in Lake Havasu City, Arizona, and what a nice sight to see, a new park under construction with modern design and a lot of amenities. This new park will enhance the user's experience for leisure and event gatherings. I'm Guy Reynolds, Lake Havasu City Park Superintendent, and we are pleased to introduce the newest addition to our park system, codenamed The Catalyst Project. With the grading complete, the new elevation is now nestled into the side of the site to meet the existing street level. This new park will feature ultra-modern design elements with steel-clad art deco shade structures, a concrete stage with ample power to support any venue, a circular promenade walkway with LED aerial lighting and pole-mounted GFI event receptacles. The landscaping will feature beautiful tiff green grass, a variety of trees, plants, and shrubs, and the rest of the area will be covered in decomposed granite with the natural hues of the desert. The concrete entrance is accessed off the corner of McCullough and Querion, leading you up to the center of the circle design straight to the stage. We have the design and construction under contract and are scheduled to have this new park open in spring of 2025. What we don't have is a name for the park. This is where you come in. We are reaching out to you, Lake Havasu City, to submit your ideas for the name you think will best represent this park. Scan the QR code or click the link to submit your ideas. If your submitted park name is chosen, you will not only earn bragging rights, but you will also receive a special prize from the Lake Havasu City Parks and Recreation Department.
Very good. So Mayor Shih and Council, we are looking for any type of ideas about the naming of our special space in the downtown, and I would like to thank Gabby Vera, our Parks and Recreation Director, for leading this effort and getting us across the finish line. With that, Mayor and Council, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Knutson. We'll move on to item seven, which is our public hearings. During our public hearings, there will be an opportunity for public discussion. When we open the public hearing, if you have any comments, questions, thoughts on that particular item, we encourage you to come up to the podium, state your name for the record, and you can state your comments. There will be a light indicator box on each of the screens around the room. We do ask that you address the council, though, with those comments. So if you have any of those comments, direct them directly to the council. We ask that you have decorum during the process, and we'll be able to answer any questions you may have or take into consideration whatever feedback you have. At the end of the council meeting, there will be an item for a call to the public. That will be an opportunity for citizens to address the city council on any items that are not on the agenda this evening, but we encourage you, if it is on the agenda, to talk during the agenda part so we can have that two-way conversation, because we cannot have a two-way conversation during call to the public. We'll now move on to item 7.1, which is discussion and action. A Series 12 liquor license for Mud Shark Pizza at 283 Lake Havasu Avenue South. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, Scott Allen Stocking has applied for a Series 12 restaurant liquor license for Mud Shark Pizza located at 283 Lake Havasu Avenue South. All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid, and no objections were received. The location is properly zoned for a Series 12 liquor license. I'm happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is also in attendance to answer any questions from the council.
Thank you. Are there any questions for members of the council, for Ms. Williams or the applicant? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. I don't generally make a comment during these types of things, but this is going in the old Trailside Building, which is an iconic Lake Havasu building, and really excited to see the improvements in this area. If you drive by this neighborhood, you'll see a lot of improvements that are going on, including this, and we appreciate the investment in Lake Havasu. Are there any additional comments or questions from members of the council before we entertain a motion?
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
I motion.
Please.
I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control approve a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Mud Shark Pizza, 283 Lake Havasu Avenue South.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Campbell. We have a second from Vice Mayor Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 7.2 is discussion and possible action with an airport update, improvements, accomplishments, future planning, and goals. Good evening, Mr. Kane.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Thanks for having me. This is the agenda I'd like to talk briefly about this evening. Safe operations, as you said, Mayor, improvements, accomplishments, and future planning goals.
Mr. Kane, could you move the microphone just a little bit closer to you?
Thank you. Better? Yes. Okay, great. So in addition to our normal daily operations, we hosted some firefighters. These are forest servers, service firefighters, and it was part of the sourdough fire in June, early June. We also hosted several military training detachments recently, including one with over 100 Air Force personnel that stayed for almost two weeks. So quite a contribution to the local community, and they also very much appreciated the opportunity to train. And then, in the bottom right there, during that particular detachment deployment, we, because of the, we had some lights that were out, and so they needed to feel more comfortable. They asked us if we could repair those lights, and so we took that on and got that fixed to improve the safety for the guys operating out on the ramps. We also completed several projects. The fire hydrant system was recessed. This has been a longstanding obstruction issue in the taxi and runway safety areas, and so the yellow fire hydrant is what we used to have, and you can see the other ones are under the ground and clearly marked for the, as the fire team has asked us to do. We also replaced the AWAS system. This has been, both of these projects have been going on for a long time, and so we're glad that we finally got them completed. And they were, the AWAS is certified in the first week of August. We recently went through the ADOT 30% Design Review for the Runway Safety Improvement Project, and things are on track there. We've submitted the required environmental study, and we're just waiting on that to come back so that we can continue with the design plan. The council approved Task Order 9 recently, and the design for the runway light project is ongoing. We also posted an RFP for a maintenance facility last week, and we happen to have Hangar 59 come available, and we've had limited maintenance capability for piston-driven aircraft for several years. And so this is our attempt to try and put something in that hangar that might close that gap a little. The facility is not quite large enough to accommodate what we would really like to see, but it's the best that we can do with a city-owned hangar. And so we're gonna have to figure out how that plays with, because we do have some minimum standards that are in policy, so we're gonna have to figure out a way to, if we decide to go forward with this, to accommodate that as we go forward with the process. Again, we, we're looking to complete the design of the runway safety areas and get that done. Grants for the 26 to 20 or to 30 CIP or the Airport Improvement Program projects for the parking apron, we'd like to see if we can get a grant for that. And we're continuing to do planning for the south end hangar development project. And in August, I went down and met with the FAA in Phoenix for, they had me for all morning, really, so I was very appreciative for the opportunity to talk with them. And it was really the whole ADO team or the Airport District Office team, a planner, engineer, and actually the district deputy director. They're very interested in what's going on at Lake Havasu and what this project represents, and they're gonna come and visit us in October, and so we're just waiting for the date to see when that's gonna be. And of course, one of the key elements of, besides the picture of the drainage that we're trying to get fixed to make sure that the airport's not really in a floodplain, this development and the funding we would need from the FAA in order to make it work, it's tied to that Taxiway Charlie project, and that's been, as you all know, it's been kind of sitting there waiting, and so we have some ideas from the FAA now on what it would take to get the funding approved and what the city would have to be willing to step up to to make this work. In terms of good governance and stewardship, we are conducting a review of all the airport leases. This is for me to understand and others, the current lease structure and compliance with the leases that we have had out there, and it's also necessary, I think, for the city, I don't think, I know, for the city to be well aware of what is out there so that as we go into future lease negotiations, we know what to do in order to advantage the city. And the first lease that should be available for that type of renegotiation is in 2027, and so this is, we really need to start doing this now if we're gonna do it right. We're working on a disadvantaged business enterprise project program. The FAA mandated a, that all the airports that receive grants have a program like this, and we've partnered, we actually have a Task Order Eight with CNS, our engineering consultants, to help us work through this. We're in the early stages of this, and we're working through the goal methodology and how, so how we would calculate goals and then to establish goals. Tomorrow, we're going to have a DBE Program Awareness Training Session for the city's staff that's gonna be involved, which would include city attorney, city clerk, procurement, finance, as well as the airport, because everybody that touches a grant is gonna have to be part of or and understand how this works and what their responsibilities will be in its execution. And then we'll have to, once we establish or recommend a goal, which I'm not exactly sure what that process is gonna look like, I assume it's through the city manager, but I'll work with city attorney on that. And once we establish a recommended goal, then we have to post a public notice advising that we're going to do this and what the goal's gonna be for 30 days, and then we, once we get the comment back, we would submit to the FAA for their approval. So it's quite a complex effort, and sometimes it looks worse than it actually is as I'm working through this. And then budget strategies, we're working on, right now for me, I'm trying to baseline, get a better baseline assessment on, the operating budget is, I understand that. What I don't fully understand is the facility's maintenance requirements that we should be doing on a regular proactive basis as opposed to just reacting. And so this is sort of beyond the grant process. I mean, grants are great for modernization, but we also have city responsibilities to maintain the airport, which guarantees our grant assurance is, you know, in good standing. So I need to really understand well, we all need to understand what those requirements are and that we develop a plan to support them. And last, Mayor, Council, I've, in the absence of airport advisory board meetings, I've been conducting regular quarterly sessions with the community of interest and stakeholders, which has worked well. So first meeting, we had more than 30 folks, the second meeting, a little less, about 10, but it's a great opportunity for them to, for anyone in the community, because we do make a public notice announcement that we're going to do this, and that works for me very well. These updates to you, as long as you'll have me, I'd be happy to come in and talk about what we're doing and why we're doing it. And then I also do regular office hours, and I have half a dozen to more than that a week that'll come in and just sit down and chat for half hour or an hour, and I'm happy to do that, too, and continue, because some guys don't, don't make it to the meetings, and this allows them to have a voice, too, which, goal for me is to have open, transparent communication for the whole community on the airport, which we all know is a significant asset for the city. And so, so with that in mind, there's, at least in my mind, as I think about it, there's probably some kind of modernization that might make the airport advisory board, if necessary, more useful as we go forward into the future, so that, that I do what I need to do, and you also counsel and get what you need from me and in terms of advice from the citizens. So with that, any questions, sir? Council?
Thank you, Mr. Kane. Thank you for the update. Lots of great things that are happening out of the airport, and we appreciate your work. Other questions, comments from members of the council? Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
First of all, I want to thank Mr. Kane for all the hard work you're putting out there. Like I said, it's good to give the update to the people that don't realize how important our airport is, especially every time you order something on Amazon and it's delivered. So, you know, we've had a lot of great improvements out there. We just redid the runway, you know, we got the new AWAS system. So I just want to thank you for all the hard work and now that you're joining the team, doing a great job hitting the ground running. So to kind of venture off of what you said, I've been the liaison for the airport advisory board for the last six years. Had a few meetings in the beginning, haven't really had much meetings in the last couple of years. I definitely would, maybe something we can push back to council for a discussion in the future. It's a, the airport's a very unique, unique situation. A lot of it, a lot of the regulation of what we can and cannot do doesn't rely on what the council decides, it relies on what the FAA and then down to ADOT and then what we can do. You know, for that reason, like I said, in the last couple of years, the only thing that I think we've seen come before the advisory board to advise council was, you know, a situation of hot fueling, which is when a plane comes in, a military plane, for example, you know, to actually have to shut down the plane, turn the engine off, turn off all the electronics to fuel it, it's, they're designed to be able to do that. So unfortunately, in our code at the time, we, it was against the law, you weren't allowed to do that. So, you know, we wanted to change that and make that correction, you know, so we had a code before the advisory council, and it was, yeah, they do this all the time, it's a normal thing. But other than that, like I said, we haven't really had much use, because the advisory board, I think, could be, it's, it's a group of very experienced people with a lot of expertise in aviation that we, as the city, aren't utilizing, because we're putting them in a, in a box where you're there to be there to advise council when we need something, and unfortunately, council doesn't really need anything or hasn't in the future. So I'd like to maybe see if we could rework that where it's steps away from the advisory to the council, and it's more something that Mr. Kane could use and be able to utilize that expertise, that committee there. It's interesting, we do these interviews with these people, there's a lot of people that have a lot of aviation experience here, and there's a lot of expertise there that, you know, Mr. Kane could use that we, as the city, aren't using. So if it was, my recommendation would be that we transition away from an advisory board to the council and then free it up to maybe, I don't know, we'd call it a different community board, but then it could be utilized as like a user group or however, but like I said, to move it away from the council, because it doesn't really, can you hear me now? Yeah. So that's all I got.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Dolan. Four years prior to your six years of service on the airport advisory board, I was the liaison, and I couldn't agree more. The, I love what you're doing. The, I love what you're doing, Mr. Kane, with engaging the aviation community and the community as at large, you know, the, the airport talks and those types of things are open to everybody. And then, of course, the expertise that you get from the users of the airport or those that come into your office or those that participate in those airport talks is invaluable. I mean, they're able to provide great resources for our community and the betterment of the airport. You know, based on your comments, Councilmember Dolan, we could bring forward changes to the code that when it comes to boards, committees, and commissions, that the Airport Advisory Board is no longer. Now, should that be the case, and that's the direction of the council, and that's the way that it goes, the other boards, committees, and commissions would remain, but the Airport Advisory would transition to something led by, by the team and Mr. Kane. And then should the need arise in the future by the users, if that's not working, which it seems to be working, we haven't had an airport advisory meeting in 18 months, I believe. It seems to be working. If not, then we come back and we can create a different board that, or a committee or commission or whatever makes sense based on the users' needs at that time. But what we have now just doesn't, it's just not working. There isn't anything for the Airport Advisory Board to do, and it's hard for them to stay engaged through that process because if you don't meet for 18 months, it's similar to the, the Board of Adjustments, which only meets as needed, but they have very strict rules of what they're going to see when a case comes in front of them. That's just not the case with the Airport Advisory Board. So I would agree with Councilmember Dolan that we, we bring forth language to update the code to make it more efficient for the way that we communicate things that are dealing with the airport. In addition to the FAA, we also are contracted by leases. So we have leaseholds that are out there that the lease language is what the language is, and we can change that when those come before us. But the Airport Advisory Board can't do anything about lease that's executed by the city. Again, the FAA has their regulations, ADOT has. There's just so many people that are here. And then, of course, the confines of a board or a committee or commission of ours has all of the other things, the posting requirements, the, the open meeting connections, all of those things where all, all of it can happen in a very public setting where people can engage in a free flowing conversation and not be put in a box, basically, by the regulations that we have to have in front of them. So.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Kind of to build on that, too, that's also, I think, the frustration of the organ, when we had the meetings was people would come to the meeting, and it's kind of like this, if you come to the meeting with something you want to address to council, you can do it at calls to the public, but we can't comment, we can't have any discussion back and forth unless it's on and itemized, it's on, it's on the agenda, then we've given notice that we're talking to everybody about it. It's the same thing with the airport. People come and they want to, well, can we just talk and get information about the airport? And it's like, well, no, unless it's something we told everybody that that's what we're going to talk about, then that's what we talk about. It has to be on the agenda, and I think that's one of the issues we're running into is people want to come to the meetings, but, okay, well, that's a great thing. We could maybe bring that up at the, at the next meeting, but then it's not something that, you know, they want to talk about stuff that relates to the users at the airport, but it's not something that council per se would be voting on. Oh, we want to paint the terminal yellow. Well, that's not a council decision that the council would make, but they want to have that discussion. Well, we can't have that discussion because we didn't put it on an agenda item and give people enough notice to let them know we were going to talk about it. And that's where the meetings with Mr. Kane has helped because they can have those user meetings and, you know, hey, well, we have a problem with the gate or we have a problem with this, and they're able to go through. So that's why, that's also the reason we haven't had meeting in 18 months is because we've started those quarterly meetings and a lot of the questions and concerns have been happening at those meetings, so.
Councilmember Lynn?
I'm not sure if anybody here can answer it, but there's obviously, there was a council before us that put this advisory board into place. Do we have a history on why they, we originally had this board?
While staff considers it, I'll give a little bit of what I believe it to be, is I think at one point when we were doing a master planning project for the airport, which we've done one, we did one in 2020 as well, I believe at that time, the council put together a board to do the master planning. What happened and occurred in 2020 was a technical advisory board. So the other folks, it expanded it beyond just the seven members of the board and brought in other interested parties, people that had experience from our community as a whole. And they went through and made recommendations that then were presented to the board and then brought forward to council, which we ultimately were the ones that approved the 2020 master plan. I believe that's the origins well before this council that's here today. I don't know if Ms. Gary or Mr. Knutson or even Mr. Kane have anything to add to that or, or if I'm completely off base.
I can tell you that it was created in 2011. Beyond that, I don't have any recollection of it. I don't remember it being anything of any great significance, but we could definitely do some research and go back and read what was presented to council at that time. I just don't, I don't have a recollection. I haven't had a chance to pull it up yet.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're not missing something that a, that a previous council thought that this was a good idea to do. So, thank you.
Yeah, great point. And if, if, you know, the conversation today is obviously the update, right now, we're focused on Airport Advisory Board. Mr. Kane gave a huge update, so you guys all might have questions on other things as well. But this would come forward to a future agenda where we would have, you know, the necessary information to answer the questions and have background information for the council to have done work to understand what it is we're talking about, so. Councilmember Campbell?
Just to help me clarify this a little bit, I, the advisory boards, I love them. I think they're a great service to our community. And the way I see it, for instance, when we had, the one thing I can think of, because I know I was an advocate for the conversation, which was the helicopters on the island, where that came to Lake Havasu City, and they came to us and asked us a lot of questions. Of course, it was directed to the Airport Advisory Board for a direction. The Airport Advisory Board came back and said that, that they approved the airport, if I remember correctly, the helicopters on the island. And for instance, the airport is a very vital and important part of Lake Havasu City. To me, it feels as if it's more transparent when we have an advisory board. I'm not there every day. I'm not showing up. I trust what you guys are saying, but a part of me is thinking, if we get into a situation of where we're going to expand, let's into commercial airlines, I would really love the layer. What am I missing here that would look different than it used to, to what it would look like today, if you, the changes that we're talking about? What, how different would this go? So it would go back to more like a TAC position where the staff and whoever are open to the public would want to come to the TAC meeting to discuss any potential major changes. I'm not talking about painting the color of a building. I'm talking major changes to our community. So the staff would oversee that and then give recommendations to the council to move forward on any, or is this now the airport is kind of sitting solo over here making the decisions for themselves?
Yeah, no, great questions. I mean, the way I would see it, from my perspective, is the council still would make the decision. So staff would take the expertise of the folks that are communicating and adding to the conversation and then bring forward items to the council through the council communication process and the agenda setting process, and then council would consider whatever those actions are. In the case of commercial air service, which I love that idea and would welcome that to happen, I believe there would be requirements of however that looked that would not, would have to be created. So whatever, whatever that is, based on the contract or the situation at the time, you know, that would, that would be different, and it would be different than we have now. So the council still has full ability and authority to, if what Mr. Kane's doing now is not working for the users, that we can change that and add a commission, an authority, I mean, whatever the thing, whatever is going to make sense to make sure that, that we're able to get what we want. So, you know, council sets, sends, sends, or sets priority. We set the goals, I mean, that's what we do. And so, you know, if we have a goal to have commercial air service or we have a goal to have more hangar space or all of those types of things, we put that forward and then we give it to the team to go out and work and come together. But again, this is just the initial conversation. I don't have all of the answers. I mean, if this is kind of the direction that council would be like, yeah, we'll, we'll consider, and I love Mr. Kane's word, the modernization of, of community engagement in this area, then the, an item will come back before us for, for full consideration and discussion about any code changes. That would be, I, I don't actually have the current code section in front of me either. I'm not familiar with it. At this time, I would want to read it again, based on this conversation we're having this evening, so.
Well, the reason why the advisory council board, the boards are so important to me is I'm not an expert in every field, and I get this agenda on a Thursday before a Tuesday to have to do this. I'd really love to lean, as we have, on our locals that are, we handpicked as a council to sit in that position based on their qualifications, all from people that own airports to the everyday airport fly, you know, what's the word, pilot, there you go. I love all those conversations, and I am concerned about the change because since I've been sitting on council four years ago, I know when I would show up to an airport advisory board, a lot of them would come running up to me and saying, for some reason or another, the city wants to get rid of all of us. I don't know what the answer was to that or in how it happened because, as we know, there's always controversy in everything we do. So it got silenced over the time, but I've spent hours on the phone with many of them with their concerns. So at this point, I, I look forward to the future discussion. Let's just say that.
That's fair. Any other questions or comments to Mr. Kane on, on any item other than, it doesn't just have to be this particular subject? Yes, Vice Mayor Moses?
Yeah, thank you. I had a couple, you, something you said brought up a question in my mind. So you say we're looking to add a maintenance provider of some sort. Isn't it a requirement of our FBOs to provide maintenance? Isn't that in, isn't that a contractual obligation?
Over time, the way things have evolved, some of that is not happening the way it was codified.
Okay. And when are these up for negoti, you know, when are, when do we make people abide by their contracts?
Well, so that's, that's why, when I looked at it, it, it looks like to me that we need to conduct a thorough lease review so that the city understands or we can remind ourselves what those requirements were.
Yeah.
And that we can appropriately take the appropriate actions that might not necessarily have been happening in the past.
So I love that you're willing to take up that mantle. That is one of the most common complaints, everyone's pointing at each other like, hey, they're not living up to their contracts. It's like, well, be careful what you wish for when we start going through contracts. But I appreciate you taking up that, that fight. I've also had a question about, how many fuel providers are there out there right now?
So now there's one.
One. And, and I know that's not all, I mean, competition's a good thing, but, but I know that, you know, we only have one right now. Have we noticed any, any issues with price gouging or anything like that?
So you, we do hear anecdotally that there is higher prices than in the past, but we all know that.
Everything's gone up.
Everything's higher than it was in the past.
We still compatible with our sister, you know?
Yes, sir. And at the previous meeting, not the one I just did most recently, but the one I did in the spring, while we were discussing that and the need for a second fuel provider and competition, there was a gentleman in the, in the group that was Googling all the local airports. And basically, the, we were right in line.
Perfect.
And so our, our fuel provider is sensitive to this, and so they do regular surveys and so that they make sure that they're, they're staying within reasonable.
No, and, and I know the FBO that's doing them, and, and they're good people, and they, I honestly believe they want to do right by our citizens, but I still would like to, to verify every once in a while. And so I love that those conversations are being had. If I can weigh in on the Airport Advisory Board, I agree with you, like Councilwoman Campbell, I have no clue whether or not hot fueling is a good idea or not. Like absolutely no clue. So very, very thankful that that board was there to answer that for me. But I, I do agree, I mean, they haven't met in 18 months, and it's one of those things, you only need them when you need them kind of deal. But I think we've established that we can, you know, get the team back together and, and make some decisions when things arise. So at that point, the only issue I, I would be looking to make sure we address is accessibility and the fact that you've taken up your little coffee with the airport managers and all of those public meetings that you have with the users out there. The fact that you are doing all those is, is, is perfect. And, and with those still in place, I would feel comfortable with only bringing the board back together when something pretty wild comes up that we need some, some assistance because I, you know, idle minds start creating problems if we don't have anything pointed in the right directions, right? So I don't think we need them if there's nothing pertinent to talk, to discuss.
Thank you.
Mayor, one more question.
Actually, I just want to verify one point that Vice Mayor Moses made about contracts and maintenance services. There is maintenance at the airport where we're lacking is for the smaller aircrafts, as I understand it. So I just want to make sure for the public that there is maintenance out there. And so there, there are boxes to be checked, but a great review of the contracts and the agreements would be important. But I don't want everyone to leave thinking that there, there's a void that's not, not currently occurring. So, Councilmember Campbell?
I appreciate having you here because I, I have these things that I think about. And here I get to just ask the questions. If I heard you clearly, you said that we are doing a lot of expansions, which the FAA would cover the costs through grants. Did I hear you properly that you're concerned about your upcoming budget on how to keep the infrastructure up, or did I miss that somehow?
So there was, before I got here, there was, we used to have money in the airport budget for facilities maintenance that is not in the airport budget currently. And so it's in, in other facilities maintenance budgets. So we tap into that, but that's, that's primarily for, I would call it reactive maintenance, things that break and need to be fixed. So we've been tapping into that. And we did tap into it last year to do some pavement maintenance. But what we don't have is that we, and I don't know if we had it in the past, but we don't have a sort of requirements based budgeting process where I say, these are all of the pavement requirements for the next five years and that we can decide how we want to do that. For instance, taxiway Alpha is going to be two years old, and we haven't done anything or, or started, I mean, I'm thinking about it and I know I'm talking about it with the Public Works Director, but it needs to be seal coded. And then the runway will be two years old shortly after that. And so that one, that needs to be done. And so these are not, they're not cheap to do, you know, that, that size of pavement. And so it needs to be adequately programmed for.
Early pavement preservation is obviously the key. It's been something I've been saying the whole time. So I did understand you correctly, and I am concerned about that because you don't want to wait till the FAA comes and red tags you for something, then we have to jump on board and fix it. It needs to be the other way around. You're willing to put a maintenance program together that will meet and beat any future complaints is what you're saying.
Yes, and, and I'm concerned that if they've done a, us a great service by replacing the taxiway Alpha and, you know, reconfiguring the geometry of the taxiways and connectors, and they did the whole runway over again. Granted, it was in really, really bad shape. But when, if we don't show due diligence in maintaining this pavement, I'm afraid that they may not want to support us as much with some of these other projects like the apron reconstruction, the north ramp reconstruction, the terminal ramp reconstruction. These are all big projects and they're all pavement. And so I, I think it would behoove us to, to show that we are willing to take care of this pavement if they pay to restore it.
Well, the ADOT right now is absolutely, this past couple of years, looking at early pavement preservation for the first time in decades, and they're putting it into their plan. And I know that there has been conversations with other roads that they're asking the contractor to go ahead and put it, that first pavement preservation, as we did with the fog seal on Lake Havasu, I mean, on Highway 95 to start out, because that's even better than waiting until it starts to oxidate. So I completely understand where you're at. Thank you for advocating for this. This is great stuff.
Mr. Knutson, do you want to clarify a little bit on?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that. And then Councilmember Campbell, we, we couldn't agree more, right? And as airport manager, Kane indicated pavement preservation is very, very important. That's how we extend the life of our infrastructure and, and identify the maximum amount of use that we can from those facilities. Want to touch on a little bit, too, and maybe add to your conversation if I can, Mr. Kane? You've been here, we're so excited, so eager to have, have you here in Lake Havasu City. You got about a, about a year, 12 months, and a part of that assessment is, is your, you have the coffee talks and engaging with the users, and you're reaching out and have these conversations and getting to know our airport here in Lake Havasu City so much, so much more and over the last, that last 12 months. And that's the assessment you're doing, working with our team is phenomenal. You've got some great ideas in terms of what the next steps are. A lot of times what we want to talk about is part of that budget. times what we want to talk about as part of that budget process is just the logistics of identifying these projects and then requesting and recommending projects to be done at the, at the airport. The Public Works Team and obviously my office, as, as we put the budget together, Jill Olson and her team were here to surround you, to help you, to identify what, what are the priorities at the airport that we need to identify in order to be the most successful airport that we can. So I know that you're, we talk about pavement preservation, but we also talk about, you know, hangers and lighting and all the, and all the different things that are associated with the airport terminal and, and other facilities that, that are out there. So we're going to have a long list in terms, in terms of things we want to do at the airport. And then we'll have to take a look at what we have as far as funding available. And then we'll make some priorities and, and present that counsel as far as the budget process, whether that's for the next year's budget, five years, 10 years down, down the road too. But yeah, we want to be strategic in terms of where the dollars are spent and how do we maximize the, the improvements at the airport. So I'm pretty excited that Mr. Kane is able to come to us with a lot of great ideas and, and, and we'll see those realized.
And for my colleagues on council, that would be through our five-year CIP plan. So as they go through the budget, it'll go on the five-year program just that we go through each year and those items would be, would be included in there. Are there any other questions for Mr. Kane? All right. I do, Councilmember Coke and maybe Councilmember Elaine, are you comfortable moving forward with the conversation about modernization of the airport advisory board? I just didn't, I, I think we have enough to move forward for a future item that would come, come forward, but I just wanted to make sure. Councilmember Elaine?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, absolutely. It's a discussion that needs to be had. And my own personal thoughts are, I think it's great what he's doing where he's meeting with the people, the stakeholders. As Councilmember Dolan said, if it's not agendized during a formal meeting, it can't be discussed, but during those coffees, it can. And then have that airport advisory board that will meet, kind of like the Board of Adjustment, when they're needed, have them meet, but don't schedule a meeting just to have it canceled. So yeah, I definitely think that the discussion needs to be had on how we move forward with that.
Oh, you're comfortable. Excellent. All right. Well, I think that concludes this, this item then. Thank you very much, Mr. Kane. All right. We'll move on to item 7.3, which is discussion and action. Ordinance number 24-1345, amending city code chapter 2.04 to add section 2.04.640, resignation to seek public office. Ms. Gary.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. At the last city council meeting on September 10, there was consensus of the council to bring back an item to consider an amendment to the city code regarding resignation to run requirements for city council-appointed board, commission, and committee members. Two possible scenarios were discussed by council. The first would mirror the state's law, which requires that members resign upon the filing of a nomination paper. The second scenario would require the resignation at the time of a statement of interest is filed with the city clerk. The difference between those two, so the nomination paper is filed after you've already gathered all of your signatures and you're ready now and you submit all of those signatures to the city clerk. The nomination, or the statement of interest, when that's filed, that's when you very first pick up your packet, you sign that piece of paper saying, I intend to run, and you file that with the city clerk, and then you go out and collect your signatures. So those two scenarios were outlined in the proposed ordinance. And so basically it says, any member of a city-appointed board, commission, or committee shall resign as a member of that board, commission, or committee upon the offering of themselves for election to a city public office. That's deemed to have been offered for election upon the filing of a nomination paper pursuant to Arizona Revised Statute, Section 16314, or upon the filing of a statement of interest with the city clerk, depending on if you want to go in either one of those directions, or possibly you might have some other thoughts today as you discuss the item. And, and so this is now up for your discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Gary. So we have the proposed language in front of us for the proposed ordinance change based on the conversation that we had at our last meeting. Really, it seems that there's, there's just two points that we need to determine. I'm going to turn over to Councilmember Elaine, since this was the item that you had brought forward for your initial statements to kick off the conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that. And I appreciate the staff jumping on this so quickly and putting these two together. One of the things we talked about how, when we were talking about this running for council, and I appreciate the fact that you put in their city public office, because that doesn't just mean the council, that also means office of the mayor as well. So I think that's very important. We always think about the council as the seven of us, but it's really six council members and a mayor. So I appreciate you doing that. Myself personally, I like the idea of when the papers are filed and they're, the candidates are getting ready to go out and knock on the door. At that point, they are separating themselves from the, the rest of the people on the board and they are going to go out and gather signatures to run for city council. And I think at that point, it's important that they resign from the board so that they are on a, a level playing ground with the other candidates that are also collecting those signatures. So that's my thoughts on it, but I'd love to hear what everybody else has to say.
Councilmember Campbell?
I completely disagree with that. I, I'm not happy with, now that I've kind of talked to a lot of people about this, this was never a problem before and now all of a sudden it's a problem. I do like how they added seek public office because I did have a lot of questions later, which asked if you want to resign and run for mayor as a councilperson. And so at that point, for sure, I know how hard it is to get these signatures. I know how many people file to get their signatures and then they start doing the hard work and realize they don't want to do this and would rather go back and sit on their boards and commissions where they were at before. I am against waiting and, you know, the minute you go pick up your nomination form, if you ask that, I would rather wait until they get all their signatures and they're actually certified as a candidate, then they will, they'll submit the letter of resignation at that point. It just seems more logical to me. Other than that, I really don't like it either way. But if I have to pick one, that's the one I would pick. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilmember Campbell. Are there any other comments, questions on this item? Councilmember Dolan?
I don't know. I was kind of on the fence with this too. It's like, you know, if you're just going to do, if you're, because when I, when I went in to pull a packet, I was more interested in just finding out what was going on and get the information and find out. But I, it is an interesting point because then once you, once you then decide, yeah, I'm going to run and you start collecting, you know, your petitions to get signed, you are campaigning. You are, you know, I'm, you know, on the airport advisory board or this board or, you know, from that point, you are campaigning. So I kind of changed my thought on this. I, I do think that, because I think too, is if you, if you're not sure, you can also, and that's my question maybe to Kelly Williams, can they get the packet of information without signing the interest and, you know, go through all the material, decide if that's what they want to do? And then they, you know, because if that's my, if that's the question, then I guess then they sign it. Is that something they can do? They can get that information without signing that they are officially running?
Yeah, anyone can come up, come in and pick up a packet. Once they filed that statement of interest, then they can start collecting those signatures.
Okay. Because if that's the case, then people can still come in, pull that packet, see if they're interested. But once you sign that, yeah, I'm, I'm running, I mean, you should be all in at that point anyway, you know, and then you're on the same level playing field as everyone else. Cause the first person you go to talk to to sign their signature, you're, you're a candidate. So that's starting campaigning. So my thoughts.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Moses?
Yeah, I had a question for Ms. Gary. Why are we qualifying it with the city public office? Cause I mean, I could see Parks and Rec Advisory Board running for school board or stuff like that. Why wouldn't we just make it public office?
I don't, I don't think that personally, we have the jurisdiction to oversee what the school board can allow or disallow as far as resign to run. I don't, I don't think we have the authority to do that. And so we're really just focused on city boards and commissions and committees. So you really, as a council, only have control over those that are on your appointed boards and they're now going to run for a city council or mayor position with the city.
Councilmember Campbell?
Mayor, the, the part that bothers me with this one is if, let's just say, there's three of us, I believe, that are always on off cycles. So if you, the ones like, I'm going to use Jim Dolan, if he wants to run for mayor, he doesn't have to give up his seat, he can just run. That's fine. Well, the other three of, am I correct? And then the.
No, I'm gonna, I'm just like, when we're talking about an elected position, the state law is going to apply. So we are only talking about when the council appoints someone to a council, to a city board, commission, or committee, that's when this will apply. So you as councilmembers say you wanted to run either maybe for a mayor position, or maybe you want to run for supervisor or somewhere in the state, then the state's resigned to run laws are going to apply to you.
Well, I thought we were changing both at the same time. You just mentioned something about mayor, but.
We don't have the power.
How was that written in the resigned to run? Do they say the minute you pull a packet? Or do they say once you're an author, an actual candidate?
The state law is at the time of filing your nomination papers.
That means after you've gotten all your signature.
That's your signature packet.
That's what I thought too.
So that's.
And that's why I think that we should mirror that. It makes a lot of sense to me. They obviously put that in place for a good reason because it doesn't take long to figure out. I'm just using hypothetical ideology here, which is, you know, you get your package, you, you're going to run against the mayor and then you're out there and nobody will sign your package at all. You're like, forget it, I'll go back and be council again. But at this point, you're, you're no longer allowed to do that. So then you get to go back and rerun again for your position in two years. And until you're out there pounding pavement to get those, those, that's a real, real life issue right there when you start to get those petitions. So again, I would like to mirror what you're saying, mirror state resign to run law and have it, if, if we're going to do this with our boards and commissions, why, why would we confuse people more by saying, oh, one's this way and one's that way, just because you think you're still out campaigning? I am still going to be telling everybody I was your city councilperson if I'm running for mayor or not. It's not going to change my overall narrative as I'm campaigning. If I sat on 16 boards and commissions, I'm still going to tell you that. I don't think it matters at this particular moment that I, you know, the, the week or two, or how long do we get? Like six weeks or something to get these signatures? That is really going to make a difference. Like I'm really going to change the narrative if the people want to sign my petition or not. So I'm going to go back to, that's my recommendations. Let's hear from the council.
From my perspective, Councilmember Campbell, it's not about the, that you're, you're serving on a board, committee, or commission. I think that's fantastic. And I, I applaud to everyone that serves on a board, committee, or commission. I, I think the more experience people have, the better they're going to serve the citizens, should they be elected. So that, that's not my concern at all. It's that the boards, committees, and commissions, that if their discussion or their recommendations to council are influenced by campaign techniques, that's what my concern would, would be in this scenario, based on, on your comments that you just previously made.
Well, we had this discussion with a bunch of mayors and council people today and said, had there's ever been a problem? And they said, none. It's almost, well.
Former, I, I'm sure you're talking about former councilmembers and mayors.
I don't think.
So maybe during their time.
Problems up here. I think that we all, yeah.
Yeah. Again, this is a, an item for discussion with this council, but, and I think the, the ones that are, are most important is the citizen feedback that we receive and then the members of, of the current elected council on this item. Are there any other questions or comments before we open the public hearing from members of the council? All right. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Yeah. Please again, just make your way to the podium, state your name for the record.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Joan De Zero, D Z U R O. And I also would like to just say, if we could do it when you are a candidate, after you've gotten your signatures. These are people that are serving on all of our commissions and boards because we love the city. We want to do what's best for the city because we live here, our families live here. And if you were going to take the next step, which is a scary step to take, to put yourself out there, as all of you know, having gone through the election process, it's nice to, because not everybody succeeds, but they still want to contribute to the city. So if we could do it once they've gotten the signatures, I think that would be satisfy both what you're looking for, which is they're not going to be influenced by being a candidate because they're gone from the commission, but also that they are definitely somebody who is interested in going forward with that or succeeded in getting their signatures. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Emiliano Torres, resident. At the time of resignation, is there, the other half of this, is there a forced acceptance of that resignation? I see half of it, but I don't see the second half. Just a question.
Sure. Yeah. Can you, I don't know if I understand, Mr. Torres, the, the question.
So I could submit my resignation and you may not accept it.
Yeah. The way I read it is that you, you, you resign and then it's accepted by the city clerk's office is the way the code's written.
That, that's the way it's written.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Bonnie Toy. Hello. The, why, I don't understand why people have to resign from the city boards. We have an airport advisory board that hasn't met in 16 months. If any of those members on that board decided to run for city council, how would anything that they've done in the last 18 months, which, which is according to not meeting, nothing, how would resigning from the airport advisory board or the Board of Adjustments, how would that help improve your city council? So why do they need to, why does anybody need to resign? That's what I don't understand.
Sure. I can appreciate your, your comments, Ms. Toy. State law has a resign to run law for elected folks. Different from this is the code. I, I think you heard some of the discussion from members of the council today. And I know you were at the council meeting when this was introduced.
Yes.
Two weeks ago. And so hopefully you can gather some of the, the feedback from those conversations of why the, the need may, may be there.
Again, I know I said it last time, was that if it was going to cause a conflict, what would normally happen is that the city council member would just recuse themselves from the issue. If it hasn't caused a conflict in, what is it, 53 years or 50 some odd since 1978, hasn't caused a conflict yet, why is it causing a conflict now?
Great point, but the, the boards, committees, and commissions may not be 53 years old. So as Ms. Gary mentioned in the previous item, the airport advisory board was created in 2011. So it's, each one's a little bit different and there, there's different circumstances. Again, I, I encourage you to recall the conversation the council had prior to opening this public hearing and also the meeting we had last time about the discussion to gather why, why councilmembers believe that there might be a need.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the city council on this item?
Don Wisdom. Good evening, council, mayor. A thought just came to me while I was sitting there, listening to your conversations. Say, for example, the Park and Rec manager decided to run. So he fills out his forms, he has to resign his office. He doesn't win, he doesn't get the office, but then we lost a very good man who's doing a terrific job for the city. I think we're looking at something that's really not there. Like we're trying to control people. I disagree with the idea that somebody has to resign because they're running. It's done all the time in, in government offices. Well, so we had one that sat in his basement that were, anyhow, I think it's a bad idea.
Thank you for your comments. Again, that is state law, Mr. Wisdom, when it comes to the elected folks, where that's not what we're considering.
I haven't done it in the past.
State, yeah. You, you, if you're going to run for a different office, you do have to resign to run. Currently, that's state law and it has happened here.
Why? Why is it coming up now?
This is for the boards, committees, and commissions to mirror that in city code. So we're talking about a, a city board, committee, or commission following or mirroring state law on the resigned to run.
Did you see my point that we could lose some very important people? Guy could lose a career. He tried to advance, then all of a sudden he, he resigns, then he doesn't get the position he ran for.
Your scenario, Mr. Wisdom, is a, a city employee, that, that's, that's done by city policies, employment policies. That has nothing to do with what we're talking about today. It would be, for example, if you wanted to serve on, on a board, committee, or commission.
You're kidding me?
And the council appointed you, and then you decided that you wanted to run for council, then you would have to resign from that if, if that was the language that the council was to adopt tonight. Your scenario is not a possibility. Again, our employment policies dictate that. State law does the elected's. This is the appointed positions appointed by the city council on the boards, committees, or commissions.
Just like the rest of the government. Thank you.
Hello, David Diaz. So I, I think it's a little interesting that this came up as a, as a discussion item at the previous council meeting. And tonight you have, it morphs into two choices instead of a third choice, which don't do nothing at all. Just leave it the way it is. That should be also your choice as councilmembers. And we are talking about elected versus elected, not, and these are, these are appointed positions. I think, I don't like the wording at the last council meeting. I think there was some shade thrown on some good people that are in our boards and commissions across the city. across the city about their integrity, that they might be using it as a way to get into office. I've never seen that happen. I never once, neither the Jones de Zero, walk into a planning and zoning meeting with a clipboard in our hand, never once, never did it. So I just think it's a little bit of government overreach, my personal opinion, but I think the third choice would be just leave it alone. There is no issue.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz. And that, of course, is an option. What's presented to us is based on the conversation that was had at the last council meeting as two of the options based on that discussion. That's always the prerogative of the council if they choose not to take action on an item. Would anyone else like to address the city council? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a comment just for council's information. I did research, so I looked at all other cities and towns across Arizona to see what they have in place and preparing what I submitted today. And every city in town had some policy. They either had some code, they had some policy that established some resign to run, anywhere from what we have here to even, even more, because the state law used to be a little bit different and a little more stringent. So some of those cities still carry some of those stringent requirements. I think it's also important to point out, this time around was the most time I got the most questions about resigning to run. And I think it's just because we have so many important issues that are coming before planning and zoning and coming through the city council that, and they weren't questions in a bad way, but they were just questions like, what if? And what do we do here? And what happens with? And then we turn to our code and our policies and we have absolutely no answers to those questions. So I applaud the city council for coming forward and addressing these things at this time, and I don't think it's bad at all. I don't think anybody's throwing shade on anybody. I think you're recognizing that we're missing something in our city code and to be able to provide information to the future yous and me's and Jess's, this is really helpful. So no matter which direction you go, and even if you choose to do nothing, at least you're, you're giving some direction to us. So we know in the future, we're better able to answer your questions and to provide you advice and, and provide directions even to those people that are on our boards and commissions. Like, yes, we want to prepare you to be the next leaders of our city. And, and here's how we can better do so, by making sure you understand what you're stepping into and how the council expects and anticipates people to act.
Thank you, Ms. Gary. Questions, comments? Yeah, Vice Mayor Moses?
Yeah, thank you. I'll, I'll make a couple of comments. This is a tough one. I've, I've heard a lot of comment on it. There's a lot of feelings involved, I feel like, on this, and it shouldn't be. I think it boils down to what is, what are our boards? You, you have to really define what they are and what they're supposed to be. Our, our advisory boards are just that. They're supposed to be advisory to the elected officials. They're not, I mean, if, if we want them to be the minor league system of our council, then, then let's not change anything. But really what it boils down to is you elect somebody to make the political decisions. But sometimes when we're making political, just political decisions, we need some experts in the field. Now, when we're doing, I mean, we, let's take tonight's discussion about hot fueling. We need to be able to send that to a board and be like, hey, what are the industry standards for hot fueling? I don't want anybody on that board making a political decision when it comes to hot fueling. I want them making industry standard decisions of like, yes, this makes sense, no, this does not make sense, so that I can be influenced by stupid political decisions. We don't need two boards making political decisions. That's what we're here for. That board is just supposed to be industry standards, just giving us guidance of what makes sense. That's it. And if we, and, and really, we need to be protecting the integrity of that. I, I don't, I want good information. I don't want political information. I get enough of that stuff in my life. We need industry standards. And if we really want to protect that, the integrity, I think we, I think we have to do it at the statement of interest. And I understand what, what some of you are saying, of protecting, you know, having the individual and all that stuff, but they're not an elected official. They're somebody that we decided to put on there to give us good technical information. So to mirror it exactly to the resign to run, it, that doesn't make sense to me. We just need the integrity of the board and the quality of information we get from them intact, of good integrity. And so I think it needs to be at the statement of interest when you, when you actually pull the packet, start collecting signatures. Said this before, it's a very technical term. It gets very politically, it gets very campaigny, once that starts happening. And, and, and it's okay. If, if we choose to go this way, we're protecting the integrity of the system, not the feelings or the power of the, of the perceived power of that individual holds on those, those advisory boards. So I'm going to stick to my guns on the, at the resigning, at, at the statement of interest. I think it's an integral part of upholding the integrity of those boards.
Thank you. Councilmember Lane?
I was ready to make a motion unless you had other comments.
Yeah, we can make a motion.
I move to introduce ordinance number 24-1345, amending chapter 2.04 to add section 2.04.640, reset resignation to seek city public office, requiring resignation at the time of filing of a statement of interest.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane, a second from Vice Mayor Moses. Is there any additional discussion? All right, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries five to two.
Thank you. Item 7.4 is a discussion and action, resolution number 24-3782, approving funding agreement with Mojave County, Arizona for Site Six fishing pier replacement. Ms. Gary?
Mayor and council, this item is to consider a funding agreement with Mojave County to for improvements for the Site Fix, Site Six Fishing Pier Replacement Project. The fishing pier was installed in 1998 and includes a fish cleaning station, public restrooms and a boat launch ramp. It's used by tens of thousands of individuals annually and is a preferred location for people to enjoy fishing and spending time outdoors. Lake Havasu City submitted a request for funding for the replacement of the Site Six Fishing Pier and the Board of Supervisors approved the request at its August 19th, 2024 meeting. The request is for up to $1.6 million for the replacement and this agreement is necessary to receive the reimbursement of the awarded funding. The expender of these fundings must be obligated before December 31st, 2024, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Gary. Are there questions or comments to Ms. Gary? I would like to thank Supervisor Johnson, this comes from his allocation for us to be able to do this. So he saw the, the vision of the community and the opportunity that we had here and was able to bring this forward to the Board of Supervisors for consideration, which, as Ms. Gary mentioned, was approved. So thank you very much to Supervisor Johnson on this item. Are there any other questions, comments or concerns before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item?
Are there any plans, anything in everybody's concept, what might happen, what's going to happen to the buildings? Is there any?
Yeah, Mr.
You're voting on?
We're voting on a funding agreement. So we're, we're voting on an agreement with Mojave County to, to be able to get the funds in, in the amount of up to $1.6 million.
Not approved yet.
No, then we would replace the fishing pier that currently is there.
We'll have drawings and things.
It'll replace the fishing pier. So if you want to see what it's going to look like, go down and take a look and then imagine shiny and new and that's what it is.
I go there all the time. I love the bathroom, really great.
That's what, yeah, that's what it's going to look like. So, all right, would anyone else like to address the city council on this item?
Hello, Mayor, Council. Just clarification, I think I misunderstood Mr. Wisdom when he said, was there any plans or drawings available? And then you said that just go down and look at the fishing pier itself and it'll be nice and shiny in a few weeks, months, whatever. And I think maybe there was a misunderstanding of whether or not the building at Site Six was being improved, corrected or replaced or redone versus just the fishing pier itself. I'm just hoping you could clarify that. Thank you.
It's just the fishing pier. So yeah, it's a funding agreement for the fishing pier at Site Six. So it'll be the fishing pier.
Okay, for a million bucks.
$1.6 million in funding to replace the fishing pier that many residents use.
Yes, they do.
Yeah. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor motion.
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
I move to adopt resolution number 24-3782, approving a funding agreement with Mojave County.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane, a second from Vice Mayor Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 7.5 is discussion and action, resolution number 24-3779, adopting a fair housing policy, making it known its commitment to the principle of fair housing and describing actions it shall undertake to affirmatively further fair housing in Lake Havasu City. Ms. Hernandez?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. As, my name is Heidi Hernandez.
Could you, thank you.
Sure. My name is Heidi Hernandez and then the Community Grant Specialist and I work closely with the Grants Manager, Vajette Sari, and I primarily focus on the Arizona Department of Housing Funding. Tonight, we're here to ask you to adopt the Fair Housing Resolution. This policy is essential for promoting equal opportunity in housing and allowing us to continue the vital work supported by programs like the Community Development Block Grant. Fair housing is a legal obligation ensuring that everyone, regardless of disability, race, sex, color, national origin, religion or family status, has equal opportunity to access housing. By upholding fair housing principles, we foster an environment where all residents can thrive and actively contribute to the prosperity of our city while helping to prevent biases and prejudices against productive classes. Thanks to CDBG and Home Funding, we've maintained neighborhoods and these funds have enabled us to address critical needs for homeowners. We've assisted many residents with repairs that improve living conditions, providing hope and security, especially for our seniors and those families with low and moderate income. For example, this last grant cycle, we were able to help one applicant weatherize her home and afterward she reported that she saved $100 a month on her utilities. So it was a great savings. Another resident was, had single pane windows and absolutely no air conditioning. So we were able to, to weatherize his windows, get him some solar shades and get his AC working and now he's able to, he enjoyed the summer heat this year versus previous. And then lastly, we also had one applicant who needed her home. She needed accessibility items because she was in a wheelchair and so we were able to do that for her and now she feels safe and secure in her home. So I also wanted to let you know that we're accepting applications at this time for homeowner, for homeowners through the Home Occupied Rehab Program. And we're also looking for general contractors to assist us with this program. Having the general contractors has been a great asset and they've helped us greatly in helping repair homes for the community. So in closing, adopting the fair housing policy is more than meeting a legal requirement. It's about continuing our commitment to making Lake Havasu a place where everyone can live comfortably, safely and with dignity. The CDBG and other housing programs allow us to address fundamental challenges in our community and we rely on your support to keep these programs thriving. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Are there any questions from members of the staff or Ms. Hernandez? All right, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor?
Councilmember Coke?
I'll just make a statement. You did a great job presenting that. Thank you for laying that all, all out, Ms. Hernandez. And I'll make a motion. I move to adopt resolution number 24-3779, making it known that the Lake Havasu City has a fair housing policy and that the community has a commitment to the principles of fair housing.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Moses, a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? All right, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 7.6 is discussion and action, professional services contract for the compensation classification study with Public Sector Personnel Consultants, Inc. Dr. Kimbleton?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. How are you all doing tonight? The item I'm bringing in front of you tonight is for discussion and possible action to approve a professional services contract with Public Sector Personnel Consultants to conduct a comprehensive compensation and classification study for the city. Best practices show that about every five years, you should take a look at the classification of your jobs, the compensation you're paying, what the market is doing, and it's about that time for us. So the purpose of the study is to determine our internal and external competitiveness in the market. The cost of this study was allocated and available for the 2024-25 adopted budget. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you have. Additionally, the consultant from Public Sector is here tonight and has a brief presentation for you if you would be interested.
Excellent. Well, maybe we go to the presentation first and then we'll take questions after that.
This is Matt Weatherly, who is the President of Public Sector Personnel Consultants.
Very good, Mr. Mayor. Members of council appreciate the opportunity. Probably would have been awkward if you would have said, no, you were interested, interested in the presentation. But we'll move really quickly through this in the interest of time. In responding to the city's RFP, we raised our hand. We are an Arizona-based firm that works with 50 to 60 cities throughout the United States annually. We've had a chance to work with well over 100 public employers in the state of Arizona. Just wrapped up our third study for the city of Scottsdale, our fourth for the city of Yuma, Yuma County. We're going to reengage with the city of Sedona, kind of on and on and on. All that qualifies us to do is ask good questions. HR kind of set the stage here in terms of the why you do these typically recruitment, retention. I'm going to throw in there managing staff expectations. If we're awarded the contract and have a chance to kick off, we will be informing all of the staff, reminding them not to go buy a new truck simply because we are doing a compensation study. It is time to review job descriptions, review the appropriateness of job titles, bring forth to you and any other interested parties, facts. Simply a data-driven exercise to define our market position, be really intentional about the monies that we spend on pay and benefits. Generally, as a service organization, you know, a good chunk of your general fund expenditure is salaries and benefits. Let's be really knowledgeable, really intentional with what we choose to spend and where we choose to position ourselves in the market. It is simply meant to be a management tool, but it is obviously one that also becomes a fairly hot topic. Staff is wildly interested. Your budget staff, you know, always wants to be, you know, kind of kept in the close loop and obviously we're not going to box you into a corner with respect to our study findings and recommendations. We want to answer two big questions. How are we doing and where do we want to be, right? And from there, we can talk about implementing any change. Just as a matter of history, the last time the study was done was not our firm. I think staff and city manager, you know, can speak a little bit more to this slide. But historically, you have chosen to compare to other cities around the state. They ring a few bells probably for population. I'm going to throw a couple other probably full-service utilities. Not everybody has an airport, you know, those types of things get a little bit trickier to compare. Obviously, what faces all of our clients in 2024 and their staff is, you know, access to affordable housing. Great, we can recruit a police officer. Where can they afford to live? Yeah, if we didn't grow one and they don't already have a house here, now what, right? I know that the study will not solve that. And, you know, that's a certain, a challenge. And there may be broader context of what does it take to get people here? What does it take to keep people here and perform in, you know, one of a couple hundred different job classifications that the city has? Lots of words on this slide, but effectively it's, let's define the jobs, let's talk about titles, let's conduct a pay and benefit survey, let's determine the fair market value of each classification. If changes are warranted, now what, right? Do we move jobs to different pay ranges? Do we move salaries along? This does not replace the budget process. This does not replace any other means that employees typically see a salary adjustment like a, you know, a market correction, a merit adjustment, anything that they might already be eligible for. The study is going to tend to run right alongside those conversations and inform if there are any areas that are not where we want them to be, you know, meaning, do we want to be at median and we're not there? Or do we want to be at median plus 5% for whatever reason? Or do we want to be at median plus 5% for whatever reason? How do we define and then defend our market position and our intended market strategy? So it's really just a data-driven exercise going to take probably five months, six months, somewhere in there. We'll marry that up with where your staff needs to be with any budget conversation for any possible impact as it relates to the study. I think that's about all of my slides. I'm going to see. It's probably it. Yeah. I'll pause there. Any questions for me? Any questions for staff that we might be able to answer?
Thank you, Mr. Weatherly. Are there questions from members of the council for Dr. Hamilton or Mr. Weatherly on this item? Councilmember Campbell?
I always have questions. I find the timing of this quite interesting. You know, we've been, when the last four years, we've been through the COVID, the highest inflationary rates that we've had in decades, and it's right before an election, and we're pulling the trigger now. I find, and not only that, private sector doesn't do it this way. That's all I know. I know public sector does it this way. I depend on my department heads to decide based on qualifications and funding and budget. So why right now? Do you ever see a change in the next five months? So you said you're going to wrap this up in five months. In five months, things could totally change, or maybe it'll stay the same. My question is, why don't we just wait until the current election is over and then take a look at it? Is this typical that we pull the trigger right before an election?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Hamilton.
More appropriate for the city team to take this question. This gentleman's here because you submitted a proposal based on our timeline that we submitted to him.
Okay.
So the reason why the timing is taking place in the fall months of 2024 is because the timing would take to complete the study would then lead us right into the budget season. So if we want to do implementation of the findings of the compensation classification, those findings would be readily available and lead right into the budget conversation so that it's all in order and aligned and organized for council to make that determination. It's part of the budget process.
And I appreciate that comment, but my question was to the expert to ask him if this is normal, that would it happen literally months, you know, right during the election? Is that typical? I mean, that was my question. To me, it seems like it should be waiting to the next budget cycle, giving us about a year just to settle down a little bit and see where we're all at. That was my question, and if you can answer that, that'd be great.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Campbell. Certainly, I think, Matt, you've done a number of these studies throughout Arizona. Do you want to talk about maybe some of the timings that you've had in the past and maybe how they coincide or don't coincide with elections or budgets and those types of things?
Councilmember Campbell, just for clarification, you're talking about federal election, like presidential election? Got it. Yeah, I didn't see 2023 coming, right? So I'll get out right in front of that and say that on a 10-year arc, I'm really hoping that 2023 was an extraordinary exception, right? And what I mean specifically by that is public sector tends to march along, probably 3% to 4% salary adjustments annually within reason for civilian, somewhere between 5% and 8% for public safety, just simply more from a market plus a step or a market plus a longevity or those types of things. So public safety moves in one orbit. Civilians move slightly in a different. We do this all over the United States, right-to-work states, Arizona, Texas. Texas does their budget 10-1. I share not so much your concern with respect to any unfortunate timing with federal as I do a great uncertainty, right? I mean, it's an absolute mixed bag in my mind right now. Does that drive? And I didn't necessarily see COVID or post-COVID really driving economic conditions the way that they did. What is real, I think, is turnover, gray tsunami, I will say, as far as retirement eligibility. As a card-carrying cynic who makes a living doing this, I would say that there's no great time and no bad time to do a study, right? So I definitely want to know, I want you to know where you stand, right? And we do that periodically under the broader umbrella of recruitment, retention, and let's manage staff expectations, right? Just to say, hey, how are we doing? Now, that doesn't mean that you have to necessarily act either on the study findings and recommendations, but also as a cynic, wages aren't going to go down because July 1 of '24 already happened, right? So let's find out where we are in the context of 7-1-24, because I don't think anything's going to go down on 1-1 of '25 as a result of presidential election, but it will influence the next budget cycle, certainly. I think that in one direction or another, I would say that 2023 hopefully is an exception. We're going to get back to the normal, which is probably 3% to 4%.
Well, thank you. You clarified that completely. It makes me understand a little bit more. It just seemed, the timing of this just seems interesting, and my next question would be, we did one, I know, how many years ago? And then what, how many years prior to that did we do one? Can you guys give me that number?
Got it. So before '19, do we remember when the one prior to that was?
Dr. Hamilton, is that something you would answer? Or Mr.?
Mr. Mayor, part of the 2019 compensation classification study, sometimes referred to it as the positional analysis study, there was, we went several, several years, 10-plus years, I don't, we, before we did anything of this sort. If you recall some of those conversations we had back in 2019 when we had a similar, you know, when this was presented to council at that time, we talked a lot about our, you know, kind of a Band-Aid approach where we make changes and adjustments to our compensation structure over the course of time, one-offs as opposed to a comprehensive analysis of what is being described here tonight. So that was something that we hadn't done to this degree for some time.
And help me recall, do I kind of remember, even though we had the study done, the study had to go back to almost all the department heads where they had to tweak it quite a bit before it came before council again? Do you remember something like that?
That's the entire process of what we're explaining here tonight, that this gentleman's going to do for Lake Havasu City if council considers it in that vein. The very first step will be to engage all of our employees across the board and utilizing the expertise of the supervisors, directors, and others. What do you do on a daily basis? What do you do on a weekly basis, a monthly basis, an annual basis? What do you do for Lake Havasu City and in terms of your responsibilities and duties? That's where that starts. That's the genesis of the creation of a job description. Sometimes those, and then that's got to be verified and confirmed by the managers, the supervisors, and directors, because sometimes they might be missing something, and sometimes there might be things in there filled out by the employees that the response by the supervisor or manager is, well, stop doing that. That's not your job, right? So you want to make sure that what's appropriate here is appropriate for providing services to our residents here in Lake Havasu City. And then based on that creation of the job description with the jobs and duties, responsibilities, and there's a job title that's identified that through the survey of our comparable cities, which was listed on that study. So we want to make sure that we're doing things in relation to other cities and towns where we're are, to a certain extent, competing for employees, to retain employees, to attract employees, and those types of things. That's the genesis of what we do. So, and Matt, you discussed it a little bit, if, from a high level, maybe you can pull up that last slide that you had there if we can? That kind of shows a little bit of what we're talking about there. So that's where the employees fill out the PAQ or the questionnaire that identifies that. We identify job titles. We look at the market, and then we identify what is the market wage or salary for the employees. Many of our employees are already at market, and this, if council chooses to implement a study when it's all said and done, would have zero, zero impact on them whatsoever. And other positions, there's employees, employee positions, not just employees. We're talking about the positions within the organizations, not necessarily the employees that hold those positions. Maybe they're out of market. So a lot of things have changed in the last couple of years. What do we need to pay an officer, police officer position to attract qualified people to come to Lake Havasu City? Firefighters, planners, engineers, parks experts, and across the board with all the support teams it takes to run our operations. So a very long-winded answer, but that's what we're trying to accomplish.
Are there other questions? Councilmember Dolan?
I just want to thank Dr. Hamilton. Yeah, we went through this in 1999, and we didn't have your expertise and experience to get us through it, and we have a new company, and I'm looking forward to that. Like I said, I think we learned a lot, and we still got a lot of good data out of that, and we made some big decisions that I think we had to make to put the city on the right track. You know, we are different than the private sector. On private sector, I can decide, oh, I'm not paying enough, and I can make that decision right now. But in the public sector, we can't just be like, oh, we think they don't get enough, or, you know, we kind of need these studies and this data on the state level to show that we are spending the money properly. And it's not one size fits all. I mean, like you said, hiring a fireman versus hiring a policeman versus, you know, public works, we have certain levels of, you know, even I know in certain levels of water, there are certain certifications you need to get, and then once they get that certification, then they go to another level, and they can be taken by a whole other company. Well, you know, we need to be able to know all those areas and be enough ahead of that so we can make the decisions as needed. So I look forward to the process, and I thank Dr. Hamilton for your experience and looking forward to it. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Moses?
Yeah, thank you. These are my least favorite things to do, but I'm glad you're going to be here this time, Dr. Hamilton. I'll echo that sentiment, but I get that, you know, the rule of thumb every four, five, six years or something, but really, the key indicator of whether or not I think we need to do this is attraction, retention, and turnover, you know, like those kind of things. So can you speak to some of those numbers?
I can address the fact that currently our recruitment is successful in most areas. We have some areas where we have positions that have been open for months that we have not been able to attract or get anyone to come here to consider taking the job. So it's not, again, it's not a one-size-fits-all situation. Our biggest problem is retention. Right now, it's a buyer's market, and so we can recruit, they come to work here, and either due to the cost of housing or somebody else is offering signing bonuses or other incentives to have them go, people will leave. We've had people left and wanted to come back. So it has been a challenge, and I would say that right now, our turnover is higher than we would desire it to be. The question is why, and it's not always a matter of throwing money at it. So one of the things this study will help us do is to identify the data to be able to really take a critical look and say, okay, here's why people come here to work, here's why people stay. Councilmember Campbell, I know you're involved with Arizona Works. We are actively pursuing the possibility of alternative compensation and classification arrangements like apprenticeship programs and working with the state to introduce some of those programs. The fire department's looking at taking their CTE program and advancing that into apprenticeship, so we're creating our own pipeline of employees. So this study is intended to give us the data, so when we make these decisions, it's not my view of what I think is going on. We actually have the information so we can make quality decisions.
I like your view. I think you know what's going on.
Any other questions, comments? All right, we're going to open the public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for any additional discussion, questions, or possible motion?
Mayor motion?
Vice Mayor Moses?
Yeah, I move to award the professional services contract for the compensation and classification study to Public Sector Personnel Consultants, Inc., and authorize the city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city and authorize city staff to exercise the option to renew for the additional one-year term.
Second.
Ms. Kerr, are you comfortable with that? It was one-year term or is it four one-year terms? Yeah, I just want to make sure. I think that's an important point if that's your motion.
For the four additional one-year terms.
Thank you. And then, Councilmember Dolan, do you still second that? I still second. Okay, perfect. All right, we have a motion from Vice Mayor Moses, a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item seven point seven is discussion and action, resolution number twenty-four, dash, thirty-seven, eighty-one, approving a minor general plan amendment revising the future land use map designations for a portion of 2540 Plaza Hermosa, tract two, three, one, five, B, block one, lot three, A, approximately 1,054 square feet from open space and park to low-density residential. Mr. Kearns?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The subject property abuts Lake Havasu Golf Course. The property is between Saratoga Avenue and Bahia Hermosa. The property owner purchased an abutting portion of property from the golf course and tied it to their residential property earlier this year, resulting in the property having both open space and park and low-density residential land uses. This request is to change the future land use designation of the old golf course portion of the property from open space and park to low-density residential, so it will match the balance of the residential lot to permit residential uses and accessory structures that would not otherwise be allowed on the golf course portion of the property. The applicant's letter of intent asks to amend the city's general plan and future land use map for the subject property from open space and park to low-density residential to facilitate development in the newly acquired area for residential use in an existing residential estates district. The general plan amendment is the first step in this process. A rezone application for the property immediately follows this general plan amendment request. The proposed amendment is in conformance with many goals and policies within the city's general plan. This item was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission by a vote of seven to zero. I'll be happy to answer any further questions, and the applicant is also here today.
Mayor? Thank you, Mr. Kearns. Yeah, Vice Mayor Moses?
Can you go back a couple slides? Yeah, that one. I don't like this just because I already hit it into that guy's backyard, and this is just going to take away my landing zone.
Can we make him put a wall up that where it bounces back?
Yeah, back into the?
That would be great.
Or golf lessons might work. Yeah. Either way.
Those don't work. I think the wall's a better idea.
All right, any questions for Mr. Kearns or the applicant? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Stuart Schmeling, S-C-H-M-E-L-I-N-G. I'm here on behalf of the Buckles, the property owners. I think that the presentation adequately expressed what our concerns are and what our request is. I'm also here with regard to the rezoning as well. I believe it's my client's intent to put up a wall in case that interests anybody and capture that additional 10 feet and use it for their backyard. Otherwise, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Schmeling. Are there any questions for the applicant from members of council? All right, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council during public hearing? Seeing now, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Dolan?
Motion?
Please.
Move to adopt resolution number twenty-four, dash, thirty-seven, eighty-one, approving a minor general plan amendment revising the future land use map designations for a portion of 2540 Plaza Hermosa, tract twenty-three, fifteen, B, block one, lot three, A, from open space and park to low-density residential.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan, a second from Vice Mayor Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing done, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Next item is item seven point eight, discussion and action, ordinance number twenty-four, dash, thirteen, forty-four, approving the rezone of a portion of 2540 Plaza Hermosa, tract two, three, one, five, B, block one, lot three, A, approximately 1,054 square feet from golf course district to residential estate district. Mr. Kearns?
The property is between Saratoga Avenue and Bahia Hermosa. This is the same property from the previous item, but it is in regard to a zone change. This request is to rezone the old golf course portion of the property from golf course to residential estates, so it will match the balance of the residential lot. This will permit property owner to use the added golf course land for residential uses and accessory structures that would not be permitted in the current zoning. The rezone will allow the property owner to apply the residential estates building setbacks and uses to the entire combined property. This rezone request complies with the required findings of the Development Code. This item was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission by a vote of seven to zero. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is also here today.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Kearns from members of the council? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion? Councilmember Koch? Please.
I move to adopt ordinance number two, four, dash, one, three, four, four.
I move to adopt ordinance number 24-1344 approving the rezone of a portion of 2540 Plaza Hermosa, tract 2315B, block one, lot 3A, approximately 1,054 square feet from golf course district to residential estates district.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Koch, a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 7.9 is discussion in action, professional services agreement with Kimley Horn and Associates, Inc. for the water treatment plant improvement project. Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I apologize for the slight delay there. I'm here to present a recommendation, um, to award a professional services agreement, uh, design, uh, agreement to Kimley Horn and Associates for the water treatment plant improvement project. Just as a brief, uh, familiarization, uh, the city does have one water treatment plant. It's located on the west side of the city, kind of in the, in the middle of that western boundary. The project location for this improvement is in the southern portion of the water treatment plant. As you see here, uh, where the circle is, as you zoom into that, we have, uh, an area here where this work will be concentrated in. There is an area of existing, uh, gaseous chlorine equipment and then the proposed area for the liquid chlorine equipment will be adjacent to that in an area that's currently, uh, not being utilized. The, uh, this will be a picture of our existing, uh, gaseous chlorine. As you can see, there are, uh, one-ton containers there on the right, which, uh, can be difficult to maneuver and such. And we feel that this would be a, a vast improvement, uh, to the process. The purpose of this project is to replace the existing gaseous chlorine system with the sodium hypochlorate system and construct a new masonry building to contain it. Uh, the new sodium hypochlorate system will improve the overall safety and ease of use in maintaining the system. The project's schedule is five months. The anticipated design completion would be February and, uh, 2025. And this was an item that was recommended in our water master plan that was done. Now we'll take questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Are there questions from members of the council for Mr. Hart? Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Hart, good job. Um, I just have a question. You said overall safety. Is the liquid chlorine safer for the environment and the surrounding people than the gaseous chlorine?
Yes, it is. In the unfortunate, um, it's, how do I word that? In the unfortunate, in the unfortunate chances that there was a gaseous leak, uh, if our employee who's in that immediate area does not have the proper, uh, protection equipment, uh, they could, uh, experience death, uh, quite quickly. And then you have a cloud that can drift depending upon where the, the wind is, uh, to locations around that, that would cause a, a hazard. This system, it would be a liquid. If something happens, it spills, they can wash themselves off and not have that same, same danger.
Should there be a catastrophic event, it's not only safer for our first responders, but also safer for our, our citizens.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Are there any additional questions? Councilmember Dolan?
Yeah, Mr. Hart, I was definitely a, a solid no when you sat down because I thought there wouldn't be any pictures, but I'm glad you recovered and there were pictures. And I always enjoy picture time of our facilities and how all this works. So thank you so much.
Any additional questions or, or comments?
For educational purposes.
All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item?
Identify the hazard. What are we doing for the employee right now? What if there's a failure tomorrow? Are we provide, you know, providing any PPE until this system is implemented? Because right now, there's a person that's a risk. And I know what this stuff is. I've worked with it before, but I don't think we can sit here knowing that there's a risk and not take some type of positive action to protect that employee. Or it be self-contained breathing apparatus or whatever he needs to have to say, we have a problem. We need to do something to protect him for the next five months. That's the only comment. I think your idea is a great idea. This stuff is nasty stuff. I don't care if it's chlorine or whatever it might be. Okay, or ammonia. You don't want to get near it. Okay? Well, what do we do for the next five months to protect that guy?
Yes, well, it's a fair question and, and we'll continue to exercise a program that we, we currently have-
What is that?
For, um, our operators that are, that are using, they have the PPE equipment there whenever we're-
Self-contained breathing apparatus, respirators?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So-
They're really not a risk then?
The, they're always, I wouldn't say that.
Mr. Murray, there, there's always, there's always a risk.
I get it.
You met with our safety officer and you-
Protect the person in the interim, you know?
Yes.
Identify the risk, right?
Yeah.
Right? There's a person's at risk. So for five months, we don't want to do, we have to do something.
Yeah, and this is the way that we've been doing it for all of these years and that's why this was brought forward, but they're following all the safety protocols that we have and we do monitor that with our safety officer. Thank you. Are there any, would anyone else like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for any discussion or possible act, or possible motion?
Mayor Motion?
Councilmember or Vice Mayor Moses?
Yeah, I move to approve the professional service agreement designed with Kimley Horn, Inc. for the water treatment plant improvements project in the amount of $347,210.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Moses, a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, the next item is item 7.10, discussion in action, construction contract to Perco Rock Company for the Havasu Pie Wash Six Project. Good evening, Mr. Wolf.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, good evening. In advance of the Havasu Pie Six Wash, uh, construction award, um, I thought I'd take a few minutes and just give you an update. We have two washes on the agenda tonight for award. Those two washes were, uh, taken from our wash program that we currently have in place. And tonight I wanted to kind of go over that with you, uh, what is in place and where we're headed with the program just as a preamble to the Havasu Pie Six Project. In 2015, uh, the city, uh, undertook the wash stabilization program. There was an engineering analysis and recommendations. Uh, that, that, uh, program identified in 2015, the wash stabilization, it identified the top 10 most critical washes here, uh, throughout the city. In addition, uh, previous, uh, CIP, uh, cycle also identified two wash crossing improvement projects, uh, needing all-weather access during emergency, uh, conditions. Uh, the successful implementation, I might add, uh, for not only 10, but two additional, you can see the lines drawn through, uh, all of that top 10 worst washes, including, uh, some additional ones. Uh, tonight, for example, is the Queens Bay under, uh, wash crossing improvements that's coming before you. But all of those projects there that are identified have, are either under design right now due to be implemented soon or have been constructed. You'll see there's one remaining and that's the 2526 project to Havasu Pie Wash Five. Successful implementation, it's 20 million plus is the value of those projects that have been undertaken in the last 10 years. Um, our future program, so now that we've knocked off all those top 10 plus, uh, we've got a future program. We've got to get ready in the next year to two years. Uh, the future program would be, of course, prepare the updated critical wash, uh, priority again, uh, included with, within this time, a floodplain management plan. Uh, going forward, floodplain management plans are pretty typical for agencies to have. Uh, a lot of, uh, funding agencies also require you to have what's identified as a floodplain management plan. Uh, so within that floodplain management plan, we would propose to utilize what we have currently, which is flow 2D modeling, it's called, where we, where the volume, the velocity and erosive characteristics of all our washes have already been modeled. We have that data in-house in the computer right now and we use it, engineering uses it. Uh, typically a lot of the developers are allowed to use it to come in with their reports and their design. So it's a great, uh, vehicle to utilize as the base for identifying future washes without really expensive modeling. Uh, from that, uh, review, we would then determine an updated priority list of 10, uh, maybe 12. We'll call them the dirty dozen or, uh, but there are critical wash reaches that we can, uh, justify doing perhaps over the next five years or so. We've been averaging about two washes a year depending on cost and, and how big those reaches are. That floodplain management plan, I might add, would also add, uh, include, I mean, uh, public outreach in, uh, the process and public notice. Uh, it would in, outline a likely environmental permitting that we would need for those washes, which typically for our washes is the waters of the U.S. and the permits required for that, but also, uh, uh, we have our owls that are native and are burrowing owls in those washes, uh, which, uh, we would have, uh, involved for relocation in the environmental permitting aspects. Uh, additional, uh, work is ongoing currently, uh, but we would include, uh, other agencies such as the Mojave County Flood Control Committee, which I'm a proud member of, uh, just joined. Uh, they welcomed us as a, being a big player in the Mojave County area. So not only the Flood Control Committee with Mojave County, but also with the Arizona Floodplain Management, uh, Program that's out there where we try and include ideas and everything with other communities, uh, here in the state. And then, of course, a big part of this floodplain management plan is the eligibility for, uh, funding opportunities. The COR, FEMA and whatnot have different programs available. They will not even look at your application without a floodplain management plan right now. Um, and then, of course, our annual flood control allocation right now, we get, uh, back from the county. It's about a little over 3 million a year right now. And so we've been parlaying that money to implement the program that we've, uh, successfully completed. Now, I, with that just update, uh, I wanted to move right into the award, uh, of the Havasu Pie Six, um, Wash Project. Uh, the project is identified here in the middle. You see that long straight stretch of wash, uh, next to our tank sites, uh, our reservoirs, uh, just downstream of Sandwood Place. There's that drop structure there. And then at the far end, uh, far to the left, um, coming down across Angler Drive is the Avalon Drain where the Havasu Pie Six will fall and cascade down into the Avalon Drain. Uh, we do, I might add, have, uh, a, um, pair of breeding, uh, breeding pair of owls currently that don't seem to want to, uh, move for our construction project. And, uh, we're working with Wild at Heart, uh, bird conservancy in Cave Creek right now to get under contract to actually have those owls relocated. Um, and we're coordinating, I might add, with, uh, Carrie Anne Lloyd at ASU as a partner in that, uh, uh, process. Uh, here's an idea. This is, this is owl habitat. If, if you haven't seen that before, those erosive banks, they make great, uh, homes for the owls also. Uh, but you'll see how erosive this wash has been in causing critical bank, uh, failures. There at the bottom left photo is the actual looking upstream at what would be the wash waterfall cascading down into the Avalon. So we've got to, uh, get some control, uh, for the sediment transport in the wash. To the bid award, uh, we were successful in, uh, having eight competitive public works bid on this project. Um, Perco Rock, who has a lot of history here in the city of Lake Havasu, uh, was our apparent low bidder. Uh, you can see the engineer's cost estimate across the top with, uh, base bid and then the base bid plus an alternate. We included an alternate in this bid process. We weren't quite sure how the rock prices were going to come in. So the bid alternate actually was going to add more, uh, riprap and rock to the wash. Uh, we wanted to make sure we took care of some critical things. So we split it up a little bit. Uh, luckily the low bid by Perco Rock came in significantly lower than our estimate, thereby leaving, uh, if we add the entire project, about 300,000 in reserve back into our flood control, uh, funding for following projects. You see the CIP budgeted was about 2 million. The estimated schedule, um, we have owl relocation first. Uh, we're undertaking that right now, making application with U.S. Fish and Wildlife and working with the conservancy for those relocations, September through October. We're anticipating a notice proceed in December and completion by May 30th of, uh, coming, coming year. So the award recommendation, uh, the base bid, uh, plus force account for the Havasu Pie Wash Six Project be awarded to contract number 500409 to Perco Rock Company in amount of $936,389. With all that said, I open it up for any questions, uh, regarding, uh, either topic here.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. Wolf. We talked about the flood control dollars and the budget and where that comes from. So that's on our property tax that's remitted to the county and then the county, uh, takes some administrative fees and then they give us the remaining and that's how we use these flood control dollars. And so the best way to describe flood control dollars to everyday users, although we haven't had a lot of rain events this year and we would love to have some more of them, uh, when you have a rain event in our community, we have to really think our way home. So if you're out in the community and you have to drive home, you know, you have to think, should I go this way or do I go this way to make sure you can get through the wash crossings or, or make your way through? Uh, it's, it's so much better than it used to be. I mean, even 10 years ago, 20 years ago, we used to sometimes have to just stay in the location you're at and you wouldn't be able to make your way home because of, of the wash crossings. Now we're pretty much getting close to the end where, where we have the, the dirty 12. Is that what we're calling dirty dozen? I guess we're calling it now. Um, uh, taking care of it. And then, of course, there's additional. Now those were the most major and then there'll be, there'll be more that will come forward after this. But the team has done such a great job identifying and using the plan that, that was outlined to ensure that our motorists can get home safely or get to their location safely, uh, when rain events do come through. So, um, thank you for that. Are there questions for, for members of the council for Mr. Wolf? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Yeah, please, just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Howdy, my name's Mike Kernke. You are in. I just wondered what, what events are your, uh, modeling cover? Like how big of an event?
Uh, two-year, 10-year, 25-year, 50-year and 100-year, uh, storm events within any of our named washes. Right now, our program, we outline, uh, through our MS4 permitting, uh, with Small City and ADEQ, we have, uh, nine major washes that we monitor. Uh, those nine would be the first that we evaluate and look for reaches. We've separated the washes into separate reaches. And so, uh, back to your question, um, uh, which was-
You answered it right off the bat real quick.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for the question. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion?
Mayor Motion?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Moses? Yeah, Vice Mayor Moses.
Yeah, it's nice to see some bids coming in under budget these days, so it's nice to see. I move to award the base bid plus additive alternate plus force account for the Havasu by Wash Six project to Perco Rock Company in the amount of $936,389.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Moses. We have a second from Councilmember Campbell. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing number, ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. And our final public hearing of the evening is item 7.11, Discussion in Action: Construction Contract to Perco Rock Company for the Wash Crossing Improvements Queens Bay Project. We'll give Mr. change seats. Good evening, Mr. Clark, and welcome.
Okay, so I'm presenting the wash crossing improvements at Queens Bay. Some background and scope on the project. This project was identified to eliminate an at-grade wash crossing at Queens Bay. The civil engineering design consisted of a reinforced concrete box culvert capable of conveying 100-year storm without overtopping. The design included riprap for energy dissipation. The project was bid to construct a reinforced concrete box structure with headwalls, earthwork, miscellaneous drainage features, and a new roadway with sidewalk improvements. Here you can see a locational map of Queens Bay and the low-water crossing, where cars have gotten stuck in the past against the headwall. I'm doing a bid award recommendation for four competitive public works bids received on wash crossing improvements for Queens Bay. The low bidder was Perco Rock. The engineer's estimate for the base bid plus the force account was 471,000. The low bid for the base bid and the force account was 349,479.40. The CIP budget was 350,000 in the flood control funding. My award recommendations are the base bid plus force account for the wash crossing improvements at Queens Bay project awarded to the contract 500548 to Perco Rock Company in the amount Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Are there questions from members of the council for Mr. Clark? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Dolan.
I have a question, so it's just looking at that picture. So they're going to basically dig down underneath there, and so the elevation will stay pretty much the same?
It will raise up to where the, about four feet higher. It's a four-by-six concrete box structure.
I'll make a motion. Soon as my screen loads. All right, I move to award the base bid plus force account for the wash crossing improvements Queens Bay project to Perco Rock Company in the amount of 349,479.40.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan, a second from Vice Mayor Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, item eight on our agenda is the call to the public. This is where citizens have the opportunity to address the city council on items within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. As I mentioned at the start of the meeting, these items will not be on the agenda, so we won't be able to have a two-way conversation, but we can listen intently to comments that you may have. You don't have to sign up, and we didn't have anyone sign up, so if you'd like to speak to us, a call to the public, please just make your way to the podium and state your
I want to just bring up a subject that I had a great opportunity last week to spend two days with Emily, the safety manager, doing a training program for, I call them mechanics, okay? The guys that work around the town, they turn their wrenches and screwdrivers, on electrical safety. It's something that's near and dear to my heart. I am, my background is electrical. I did do electrical safety training for a long time. I give her a lot of credit. You guys are in the beginning stages, okay? You've got a lot of work to do. It's only one person, and when I look at her and the amount of responsibility she has and what she's been able to successfully complete, she deserves a lot of credit. But the program last week was fantastic. I had 40-year people in there, 40 mechanics, tradespeople, sitting there for two days, listening to shock, electrical shock, arc flash and arc blast. I won't go into those, okay? They're somewhat complicated. But this is a great thing to do to train people. They have to have the awareness of what they're working on, and that's where the biggest risk comes in. I'm sure every one of you, and myself included, got that zap once in a while because I didn't turn the power off, okay? Or I was in a hurry. Fortunately for me, I was 50 years in the business, I survived it. But what was done last week is just amazing. We found in private, the more you tell people and the more you make them aware of what's going on, not only does it protect their safety and what they do, but it also gives them the sense that we really care about you, right? We want to make sure you come to work every day of the week, and we want to make sure you go home every day of the week the same way you came to work. So my compliments to Bobby and Emily and all of you for supporting programs like this. There's a lot more to do. You've got a long way to go. And again, I'm not up here to point my finger or anything like that or go shame, 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 but that's a great thing I saw last week, and everyone that was there appreciated it. The funny part about it, and I'm going to run out of time here real quick, but I'm not going to. I sat in the class. She invited me to it. I've been working with her on some of this stuff, Justin, I've talked about this. And I sit there and I look at the syllabus, and I'm reading through the syllabus, and I'm like, wow, this is bringing back some memories to me. The instructor comes into the room, and he talked, and I said to him, do you know this person here? I asked him if he knew the person. And he goes, yeah, that's me. And I said, you don't remember me? And he goes, oh, my God, it's Tim Murray. He did work for me in Illinois when we first developed the Electrical Safe Work Practices Program that I put together for that plan for electrical safety. He said, I don't recognize you. And I said to him, well, I don't recognize you either. You've got gray hair, and I have none. But that's a joke. It was a great program, and I hope to see more of it as it goes along, and I'm more than willing to help. I'm all about people's safety and about the old concept. I come to work safely and I go home safely, and that's, that's our responsibility as far as employers go. So much as I question stuff sometime, I always like to recognize people that have done a great job, and that was a great program last week. It's going to have to be run again, and my recommendation is, by when it's going to take place, spend the 10 minutes to come down and just listen to what goes on, because it's important for people to know that we care about people. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Would anyone else like to address the city council during a call to the public? Seeing now, we'll close the call to the public. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, please, yeah, make your way to the, oh, yeah, no worries, yeah, make your way to the podium and state your name for the record. Oh, no, yeah.
Should I miss out or not?
Sure.
Okay.
If you just start with your name.
Joanne Yardley.
Okay.
29-year resident. On April, I'm going back months, April 9th council meeting, city manager, Mr. Knudsen, said tens of thousands of dollars was owed to the city by contractors that had not turned into the city their hydrant meters. Also, that there was one outstanding that was over $100,000. Has that been paid? Mr. Knudsen had also stated that the city has run into issues the last couple of years that we had meters that were on the construction site that weren't returned to the city. So that means that not only losing out on the meter itself, but also the water sold through the meter, the city has not been compensated for that to various sizable amounts. Let me comment. The water was not sold. The water has not been paid for making it up. April 23rd council meeting, council member Michelle Lynn asked the question, Mayor, she, our city manager, told us at the last meeting that we had some outstanding water things. Is that all cleared up? Do we have any extra ones? Are we good? I'm sorry, I'm really nervous.
Yeah, no, take your time.
Mr. Knudsen had said, we are far from good. There are meters that are outstanding that were hard at work. Mr. Knudsen did not answer Michelle's question, from what I heard. Mr. Knudsen needs to explain what he means by far from good. Do we have any new, extra ones, bad actors that have not paid for water they took after April 9th this year? How much money has been collected reimbursed to the city out of the tens of thousands of dollars owed to the city that are outstanding prior to April 9th council meeting? Michelle said her question was, are there still outstanding ones? How do we, are we ever going to find out who they are, or are they going to continue to get free water? Mr. Knudsen said, we are taking every effort possible to identify these bad actors. Dozens are outstanding. The process now is moving forward. How can the city move forward when tens of thousands of dollars in water taken is still owed? It has been five and a half months since April 9th and 23rd council meetings. How many bad actors have been identified? How much money has the city been reimbursed of the tens of thousands of dollars owed for water used by contractors and local businesses? Mr. Knudsen, in executive session, should present, this is my opinion, to the city council, a complete breakdown of the contractors and local businesses, the amount of money owed to the city for the water taken. City Attorney Ms. Gary should give the law where it is stated, because she said the last time to Mr. Dolan, that you're not allowed to have names. If she would give the law where it is stated that city council members cannot know the names of contractors who owe money for taking city water. Michelle Lynn is the only council member who is concerned about the tens of thousands of dollars owed to the city. This is what I have seen by watching it online. She is a great asset to our city. I would like to see her with city manager Jeff, Mr. Knudsen, work together on this issue. I feel with her involvement, we will get results. I'm just real concerned about this money.
Yeah, thank you.
It is owed to us, and I'd like to see it come, you know, it's been five and a half months, and I'd like to get where the city council is updated, and I would like to hear the results. Have we received any money back, reimbursed?
Thank you, Ms. Yardley. We can't, we can't have a two-way conversation here, but...
No, no, I know, you're not going to answer.
Reach out to my, reach out to my office when you get home. Yeah, when you get, when you get home, reach out to my office, and we'll get, we'll get you some answers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council during a call to the public? All right, we'll go ahead and close the call to the public. Item nine, our current events. Are there any council committee reports? Councilmember Lane?
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple. First, Go Lake Havasu had a recent meeting, board meeting with Go Lake Havasu, and one of the things that they want to do, instead of just submitting quarterly reports, they would like to come to our meetings and not just give statistical information, but also tell stories about what their efforts are and how that is the return on investment for the dollars that we're spending on that and tell that story. So I think that's a great idea. Go Lake Havasu is continuing to move forward with helping the city. With that said, we also, earlier, we talked about the downtown Catalyst Project, and one of the things that I've been hearing, for people who paid attention, we know that we gave a bid to the downtown Catalyst Project to a contractor that did not include bathrooms, but that was because our staff said that they could do the bathrooms. In order to make that happen, Go Lake Havasu and the PED are actually, they have committed $200,000 to the city to partner with the city for not just bathrooms, but concession stands and storage and all that. It'll be a full building, and they're going to try to raise additional funds over and above that 200,000. And since we're talking about the Parks and Rec and the Catalyst Project, I just want to reiterate, we had last night a Parks and Rec board meeting. One of the things we discussed there, Mr. Knudsen brought up in his city manager's report, is the naming of the project. The Parks and Rec's department has put together this naming contest. They do have some sort of a prize for whoever comes up, but there's a QR code that you can go on the city website, or you can go down to the location. There are signs posted there with the QR code so that you can be part of what's actually happening here in the city through Parks and Rec. And then, another thing that they're, they are doing, it's a little bit early, it's not till the end of October, but you know, we have Friday night downtown for trick-or-treaters and stuff. Well, Parks and Rec has come up with an alternative for people that don't want to go downtown. They're calling it their Halloween Spooktacular, where you can go on that night, October the 31st, from 5:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m., and they will have a trunk-or-treat for people to go there, and there will be costumes, a movie in the park, and candy for the kids as an alternative to downtown. Thank you, those are my reports, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Lane. Are there any additional council committee reports?
Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell.
I don't know if we discussed it. Did you bring up the, the hiring of the MPOs?
Not in, not during a council committee update, so if you would like to do that.
Okay, I couldn't remember if we had already, but we're excited to say that we have a new director in training, Sarah Lowowski, who has stepped up, or we hired her. The Metropolitan Planning Organization is an organization that comes to our city from the federal government once we hit a population of 50,000 or more. If we work closely with them, they're supposed to help us guide us with traffic, infrastructure, growth of our community. And so through this, we've had challenges keeping directors in place, and we're lucky to say that the administrator that has been under two other MPOs has stepped up. We are putting her in as director in training, and we were fortunate to find, and if I'm correct, is his last name Martin, Tommy?
Correct.
Okay. A gentleman by the name of Tommy Martin, which is actually a traffic engineer, has lived here in Lake Havasu City for eight years. We welcome this as a team, this is a great team for us, as we move into the RTAC, which is the Rural Transportation Avisy Council, which lobbies rural transportation in the state of Arizona for funding and other items. And lucky for us, we'll get to bring, I believe, Tommy and Sarah with us to the Prescott 25-Year Summit where we lobby legislators. So I'm really excited for Lake Havasu City and our, that we have full staff in that department, and I'm looking forward to seeing what they can bring to the table. Thank you much.
Thank you. Are there any additional council committee reports? All right, move on to item 10, which is our future meetings. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, October 8th, 2024, at 5:30 p.m. It'll be a regular meeting. And then we'll have a meeting on Tuesday, October 22nd, 2024, also at 5:30 p.m., and it'll be a regular meeting. Item 11, are there any future discussion items? Item 12, motion to adjourn? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you for being here. Be kind, we'll see you next time.